Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Governance and Transparency Committing Meeting. Just checking attendance, we've got the full councillors in attendance. Start off with our acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Do any councillors this morning have declarations of interest in matters on the agenda? There being no declarations or business outstanding, I'll move to the confirmation of minutes. Let's seek a committee member to move those, moved by Deputy Mayor Milligan, seconded by Mayor Harding. Any discussion on those minutes this morning? There being no discussion, I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Item two today is an officer's report for revisions to the People and Culture Strategy 2021 to 2026. Are there any questions of the relevant officer on this matter? There being no questions, I'll seek a mover through recommendation A and B, moved by councillor Doyle and seconded by councillor Milligan. Any discussion this morning? There being no discussion, I'll proceed to the vote. Those in favour of adopting? That's unanimous and carried. Item three today is leases for renewal over trust land. I've circulated an email with committee members about moving a procedural motion here. Has everyone read that? Alright, so I'd like to move a procedural motion that the Queens Park tennis facility lease be referred to the next council ordinary meeting. That's items A through D. And a...
Are you saying that for next week or for January?
For next week, yeah. So that's the motion before us up there. Give everyone a chance to read it. To clarify again, it's recommendations A through D. Alright, do I need a second for that? Can't think of it. Don't think so? Yeah, alright. Any discussion on that? Be no discussion, I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour of adopting? That's unanimous and carried. I'll refrain from calling it the green shed, other than saying it once and looking at councillor Milligan. But we've got recommendation E through G now that deals with that. Are there any questions of the relevant officers on this matter? Mayor Harding?
Yes, please. May I just have some questions on the, on the show?
Yeah, which department? Property Services?
Yeah, Property Services. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Good morning. Carrie Parrott, Senior Property Officer.
Through the chair, thank you, Ms Parrott. Thank you for the, the report. I sort of wasn't aware, so I'm asking a few questions because the first time I saw this was when I saw the, the papers, the committee papers. So I wasn't aware of these negotiations underway. So what was the existing arrangement and how was, what's, what's, and what is this arrangement? What's, what are the differences?
There are no differences. It's a nominal fee for the society to store a... It's to store, like, yes, a sulky that was donated to them by council some years ago.
I think this is, no, this, this matter is to do with the lion's shed.
Sorry, through the chair.
Oh, so it's a green shed, not the red shed? Okay, so the green, okay.
Rosewood Showgrounds.
Yeah, this is on at the showgrounds. The next item is a red shed next to what's called the green shed in Marburg.
Yes, okay, so the green...
This is the lease with the Lions Club of Rosewood that is, that is sitting on the Rosewood Showgrounds.
Yes, so there was no existing tenure. The Lions Club received approval, owners consent to build their shed. However, no formal tenure was prepared over the land. Council has since identified that the shed is there and because it is on reserve land, trustee lease is required for the shed to remain there. Ministers consent will be obtained for the shed.
Through the chair, you mentioned that there was previously owner's approval. Who was that owner?
Council did provide, predecessor in Works Parks and Recreation provided that consent.
And was it in writing?
It was in writing.
Thank you. And how have the discussions with the Lions Club of Rosewood gone? Are they happy with this arrangement or not?
They're very happy with the arrangement. The arrangement is for a term of five years. It's just for storing their items like barbecues and that they use for their charity.
Have you consulted with the Rosewood Show Society on their views on, on this?
No, we haven't.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll seek a mover for recommendations E through G. Moved by councillor Milligan, seconded by councillor Doyle. Any discussion this morning on that matter? Mayor Harding?
Chair, if I may, just on procedural discussion that you and I did have, knowing that the, the items on this, the matters in this item are similar due to the leasing instrument, but they are completely different locations. And I, I think just for clarity and so that people don't get confused, they probably should have been separate because on this one is the, the tennis association is A, B, C, D, and then E, F, G is Rosewood, where we should refer to the shed that is on the Rosewood Showgrounds being green, not the green shed, because that is very confusing with the green shed at Marburg, which is a following item, the red shed next to the green shed. So just for, so it doesn't confuse people, I think, CEO.
Would you like to retitle the matter now that the tennis facility is being sent to the ordinary?
That, that would be a bit of an administrative matter, I think. CEO, do you, through the chair, sorry?
For my sense, Chair, I think it's known as the lion's shed.
That's correct. It's known as the lion's shed locally at Rosewood. Anyway, it's just a...
That doesn't give a proprietary interest, using that nickname in papers.
It's probably because it's got, got their logo on the outside of it that makes locals refer to it that way.
Anyway, you're, you have the floor to propose whatever you'd like changed here.
Sure, so I would suggest that we separate the items so that if related parties reviewing the minutes, that it is, it is clear for them and that there's no confusion with regards to the matters.
So the part of the agenda concerning the Queens Park tennis facility is already being referred to be its own item at the next ordinary meeting. The meeting clerk has updated the agenda, so it now reads lease for renewal over trust land, Rosewood Showgrounds, in brackets, the green shed, One Railway Street, Rosewood.
I'm satisfied with that.
Alright, any discussion on the business at hand?
If I may, Chair, and I might ask, if I may, through you, Chair, ask the Division of Four councillors, do we know that if there was any consultation with the other users of Rosewood Showgrounds at all? Because I know the show society hasn't been consulted. My, my concern is having a five-year lease on a shed that I know is, can be some contentious with some of the user groups. That was just my main concern. I'm very happy with the work that Rosewood Lions do in the community and they do fantastic work, Chair, but I just was wanting to know, it doesn't look like there's been consultation done with the other user groups. And there's multiple user groups at the Rosewood Showgrounds there. So, okay. So based purely on that, not, not against the Rosewood Lions, but I won't be supporting this particular thing because I'd need to make sure that the user groups are, are consulted, as, as you would imagine, for that particular tenancy.
Through you, Chair, Mayor. So are we suggesting that we may defer this matter as well in order to give time to get feedback from the show society and other relevant users there? Is that...
I'd be open to that, Chair, of deferring.
That could be done procedurally, but if you've got explicit terms that you want investigated, you could include that as an amendment or another motion or, yeah. It really depends what you want. Do you want it?
So to me, I want to make sure there's consultation with other user groups and also consultation with myself and the divisional councillors as well. So would that mean I'll do an H? I'll propose an H?
You can do an H or refer it to a council meeting. It's really up to you.
I'll propose to refer it to a January, the January council meeting, if that's okay with you, Chair.
Yep.
And, and that consul, through the chair?
Yeah, I think you could include that in the procedural motion.
Be provided to the committee.
The mover and secondor, well, it's a procedural, so I'd actually, should say at the top. Yep.
I'll move that. Thanks.
Sorry, I'm just not clear. The matter's being referred to the honorary meeting in January. Are we also asking that the report is updated before it comes to us, including consultation with, with all relevant
users at the showgrounds?
Yep.
And the mayor and divisional councillors?
Yeah, I think that's good now.
We've got something up on the screen if everybody just wants to cast their eyes to it and identify if that's sufficient.
Yeah, maybe just put the word showground between the, sorry, Rosewood, sorry, of the Rosewood showground. Thank you. Thank you for your indulgence. Thank you, Chair. I'll move that.
Alright, given I think everybody's read it, I'll put that procedural motion to the vote. Those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Item four today is about the red shed next to the green shed. Are there any questions on this item of the relevant officers? It's also about the Rosewood and District Support Centre. But, yeah. Any questions? No? That being the case, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A through C, moved by councillor Kunsman and seconded by councillor Milligan. Any discussion this morning?
Just myself. Again, I'll vote against this because I have not been consulted in any way, shape or form on these two matters. I think they're substantial. I think the red, both, both, both the Rosewood District Support Centre do great work and the Marburg and District Residents Association do great work. And I, I know the red shed there with the sulky, but again, there's been no consultation myself. I don't know if there has been with the divisional councillors. So at this stage, I'll be voting against it.
Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
This item also has multiple matters within the item. So it is covering Rosewood Community Centre at 19 School Street, Rosewood, and the community park at Marburg, the red shed on 108 Queen Street, Marburg. So I think the items do need to be separated, the matters separated into separate items on the agenda. I do fully understand that they're grouped together, have been grouped together due to the nature of the, of the instrument, but it does cause confusion.
Chair would agree with the deputy mayor that I think it's better governance and better, a cleaner, less, a cleaner process if they ask as, as different properties.
Councillor Doyle?
Thank you. Through you, Chair, if I may, ask the divisional councillors, aside from those administrative type changes to the description, do you have feedback specifically around one or both of these facilities, being Rosewood?
Not about the leasing, no. Not recently.
So again, through you, Chair, if I, if I may, Mayor Harding, have you received concerns around this one from any of the user groups?
I've received no concerns, but also haven't been consulted. The organisation, the first I saw of these were these committee papers last week. I don't know if the divisional councillors have been consulted on them, but they are significant assets in our community and I would certainly appreciate, as the mayor of this city, to be consulted on these matters.
Alright, I'll seek some guidance from the committee on how to proceed. Was there a will from councillor Kunsman and Milligan as the mover and secondor to split them before voting or?
Yes.
Alright.
Oh, actually, Chair, so now considering, as a whole, the, the other commentary in that I, I'm not at all in favour of asking members of a committee to vote on a matter that they feel they don't have full information on.
Yeah.
So I would support my committee colleagues in being able to receive that information in a timely manner so that decisioning could be made. So I think with this item, that it'd also be referred to a later meeting.
So you're happy to move that as a procedural motion?
Yes.
And...
And that the items be, the matters in the item be split.
And include consultation. Chair, councillor Doyle?
I was just going to ask for that clarification, but you're honoured, Chair. Thank you. Sorry, again, through you, Chair, and, and maybe the CEO may offer some advice on this, you know, definition of consultation. What is the expectation here from councillors? Is, is it a meeting or is it a councillor-wide briefing? What's the expectation? What's needed? Knowing, noting that we're in a very busy time of the year and going into a busy time very early in the new year, I'm not sure that it would warrant a briefing session as such. So are we comfortable with consultation?
I'm happy to have a briefing. I would also probably meet with the council officers as well, with the divisional councils. I'd just like to know the background and that I want to make sure that the committee groups have been consulted, what were their issues, concerns and so on. So that's, that's, that's all that I'm asking for.
Alright, well, the meeting clerk's prepared the motion as per the directions of councillor Milligan.
And I think too, Chair, if I may, it'll also give me the opportunity to speak with those community groups as well, to see that they're okay. And, and if they want to raise any issues or concerns, it gives them an opportunity to do that with their elected representatives. So I'm very happy with that. Thank you very much, Chair and Deputy Mayor.
Councillor Kunsman?
It's not clear what the urgency is to me. Is it clear to anyone else?
Alright, if that's the discussion exhausted, I'll proceed to a vote on councillor Milligan's procedural motion on the screen. Those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Item five today is the renewal of expenditure lease over 62 Brisbane Terrace Goodna for the Goodna Off Leash Dog Park. Are there any questions on this item this morning? Being no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A through C. Moved by councillor Kunsman and seconded by councillor Milligan. Is there any discussion this morning concerning this item?
I'll have my own one that I did not know about, but I, I think the report is self-explanatory. I'd be happy to support this one. But again, I was not consulted or notified that this was an upcoming matter despite having, I wasn't consulted or notified. Thank you.
Alright, I'll proceed to the vote. Those in favour of recommendations A through C? That's unanimous and carried. Item six this morning is a fees and charges matter. It's early approval of public health, food business and road regulation annual renewal fees for 2425. So one recommendation. Are there any questions this morning on this matter? There being no questions, I'll seek a move from the floor for the recommendation. Moved by councillor Doyle and seconded by councillor Milligan. Any discussion this morning from the committee?
I just note, Chair, that obviously the busking fees have decreased. So I think we'll see a lot more, hopefully a few more buskers out and about in our city.
Alright, I'll proceed to the vote. Those in favour of adoption? That's unanimous and carried. Item seven this morning is another fees and charges matter, inclusion of annual on-demand curbside collection services into the register of fees and charges. Are there any questions on this item? Be no questions, I'll seek a mover for the one recommendation. Moved by Mayor Harding, seconded by councillor Doyle. Any discussion this morning?
If I may, Chair, I just think this is a great step forward. We, we did approve our resource recovery strategy in 2021 with, with four pillars. And I can see that we were, you know, methodically going through that and doing our bit to become a better, I guess, community when it comes to how we manage our own waste. So I was fully supportive of this plan to change with the change to the annual, the annual on-demand curbside collection, but also noting the, the cost in this is a new thing for us. So I think it's supportive of this and hopefully it's taken up with gusto.
Thank you, Mayor. Any more discussion this morning? Be no discussion, I'll proceed to the vote. Those in favour of adopting? That's unanimous and carried. Item eight this morning is the procurement matter, the supply and delivery of mobile garbage bins. It is a four-part recommendation. Are there any questions on this item? Be no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A through D, moved by Mayor Harding and seconded by councillor Milligan. Any discussion this morning from the committee?
Again, Chair, I see this as, we're working through our resource recovery strategy that we approved back in 2021. It's good to see the progress that our organisation's making in regards to recycling and especially in the Fogo area.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, I'll proceed to the vote. Those in favour of adopting? That's unanimous and carried. Item nine this morning is a procurement matter, the construction of Hardstand at Riverview Refuge and Recycle Centre. It's a four-part recommendation. Are there any questions? Be no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A through D. It's moved by Mayor Harding and seconded by councillor Doyle. Any discussion this morning from the committee?
If I may, Chair, again, I see as part of our resource recovery infrastructure plan, we are doing the upgrades to the Riverview site, just like we're doing the, the Rosewood site. While in conjunction, we're also planning for two new transfer stations as well. So a significant amount of work, we are spending about $70 million this financial year on upgrading our resource recovery. So wonderful to see this happen. So thank you, CEO, for that. So wonderful to see this happen, so thank you CEO for that.
Thank you Mayor, any further discussion? There be no further discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour of recommendation A through D, that's unanimous and carried. Just a second. Item 10 this morning is a procurement matter, disposable valuable non-current asset leases for three facilities. The report speaks to a fourth with no outcome at this time. On this matter, I'd also circulated some information to committee members about deferring this to the January meeting to allow some further consultation with the elected body and to consider an upcoming indoor sports facilities plan for council as well as some of the matters coming up in the Economic and Industry Development Committee for Olympic Legacy. So I'll move a procedural motion that this matter be referred to the January council meeting so that we can be dealt with, it can be dealt with after those discussions and have, have occurred. Any discussion on that?
Thank you Chair, just specifically in relation to the Red Bank Collingwood Park Sports Complex, I absolutely am supportive of deferring this one until January so all council halls can be briefed and get up to speed before we make our decision, but just for the record, noting that this, the Red Bank complex is very much loved and heavily used by Division Three residents, particularly in the eastern suburbs, around gymnastics and other sorts of therapies. So keen to get this one through in January and dealt with, yeah.
Thank you councillor Doyle, any further discussion? There be no further discussion, I'll put the procedural motion to the vote, those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Item 11 today is the procurement matter for the extension and increased expenditure on road resurfacing and maintenance. It's a preferred supplier arrangement, three-part recommendation, are there any questions of the relevant officers on this matter? There be no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A through C, that's moved by Mayor Harding and seconded by councillor Milligan. Any discussion this morning? There be no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour of adopting A through C, that's unanimous and carried. Item 12 today is the procurement matter, expression of interest Ripley Road and Fisher Road, Ripley Road upgrade. Checking that, two-part recommendation, are there any questions this morning of the relevant officers? There be no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A and B, that's moved by Mayor Harding and seconded by councillor Milligan. Any discussion this morning?
If I may, Chair, I want to acknowledge the strong advocacy from your sovereign councillor Ireland, including, I think, last year going to Canberra as well. And I thank you for the commitment of all councils to the progression of this significant road project. We all recognise that the Ripley Valley area is growing at a rapid pace and that truck infrastructure to support this growth is desperately needed. As the fastest-growing city in Queensland, Ipswich requires significant transport investment from all levels of government to keep our city moving. Ripley and Fisher Roads are one piece of that puzzle. We also need things such as the Ipswich to Springfield Central Public Transport Corridor and the Butter Better Bus Service for Ipswich, particularly the Red Bank Plains, Ripley Areas Bus Service as well. So I'll be certainly supporting this recommendation before us, but I also put out another call to our government partners to also come to the party when it comes to delivering greater transport connections in Ipswich.
Thank you Mayor, any further discussion this morning? There be no further discussion, I'll put recommendation A and B to the vote, those in favour of adopting, that's unanimous and carried. Item 13 this morning is a procurement matter, expression of interest Green Energy Partner for Green Energy Precinct. It's a two-part recommendation, are there any questions this morning on this matter? There be no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A and B. Moved by Mayor Harding, seconded by councillor Doyle, any discussion this morning? There be no discussion, I'll proceed to the vote, those in favour of adopting A and B, that's unanimous and carried. Item 14 this morning is the procurement matter Oracle Fusion Managed Services, it's a three-part recommendation. Is there any questions of officers on this matter? Be no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A through C, moved by Mayor Harding, seconded by councillor Doyle. Any discussion this morning? There be no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour of A through C, that's unanimous and carried. Item 15 this morning is a procurement matter for a renewal of the Smarty Grants Platform, it's a two-part recommendation, are there any questions this morning? Be no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A and B together, moved by Mayor Harding and seconded by councillor Milligan. Any discussion this morning?
Yes, Chair, if I may, I think I would probably be agreed with by my colleagues in that Smarty Grants is the platform that we do utilise for our community funding applications. I personally note in particular that as a user, it's not really the most friendly and I have had feedback from community organisations where, and in particular when it's their first time applying, that they do find it somewhat cumbersome and they often have to contact council for assistance to navigate through it. So that's just feedback on the matter with regards to that.
Thank you councillor Milligan, I must self-know from having discussed it with other people. It's just Smarty Grants is very widely used and while I concur with you, at times I find it a bit, bit interesting as a user interface. Yeah, it's fairly standardised in use, so I'm not sure what we can do in that regard, but take your commentary on board.
Chair, if I may say, I first used Smarty Grants when I was working in the Queensland Government because I was assessing grant applications in that, so it is widely used in the state government as well, but it probably wouldn't hurt for us to provide some feedback to the vendor to say of, of things that we'd like to see in future upgrades, yeah, thank you.
Alright, if that's all the discussion this morning, I'll put recommendation A and B to the vote, those in favour of adopting, that's unanimous and carried. Item 16 this morning is an I-Volve Programme Report for November 2023. Just the one recommendation there, is there any questions for the relevant officer on this matter? Be no questions, I'll seek a mover for the report, moved by Mayor Harding, seconded by councillor Doyle, any discussion this morning? There be no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. That was my last report before me this morning, I've got no notices of motion or matters arising. So I'm prepared to close the meeting at 11:02 AM, with the next meeting to commence at 12 past 11.